Seven thirty now, and I would like to call to order tonight's Olbridge Planning Board meeting for tonight, March twenty-fourth. And I would like to welcome everybody back in the building. It's been a couple of years since we've been here, and it's nice to be back.
What do you think it's like?
It smells like a new car. I love it. Okay, so if we would all stand and salute the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America. We stand one nation under God, individed, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I'd just like to make a quick announcement to the board members. If, when we use the microphones, keep them off until you're ready to speak, push them on, and then push them off again when you're done speaking to avoid any feedback or any background noise.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Olbridge Township Planning Board has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, mailing such notice to the home news Tribune, and filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk. Can I take the roll call?
Yes, roll call.
Chairman Marucci?
Here.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Lenning?
Here.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yeah.
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lauer?
Here.
Mr. Renner?
Here.
Mr. Pink?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Missella?
Here.
Mr. Sardello?
Here.
Ms. Shapiro?
Here.
Ms. Savant present.
Okay, thank you, Vina. First item on tonight's agenda are the meeting minutes from February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Do these separately? Yeah, okay. So do I have a motion for the February twenty-fourth minutes?
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. De Palma, second.
I'll second it.
By Mr. Pink.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Okay, and the second item is minutes of March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion for that? Moved by Ms. Cannon, second.
Second.
By Mr. De Palma.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
I'm staying, I wasn't at the meeting.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Okay, now moving on to the Master, two thousand seventy Master Plan Reexamination Amendment, and this is a discussion.
As you may recall, we updated our master plan, we wrote a master plan reexamination in two thousand seventeen, we had another update in two thousand twenty, May of two thousand twenty, and that was related to the electric charging stations. And this year, typically at the beginning of the year, I come and make a presentation to the planning board, giving them an overview of the upcoming projects for that year. And this time, I wasn't able to do it, only because I really wanted to change or amend the master plan to include, because in future, when I come with these redevelopment projects, I do need to come back to the board for consistency with the master plan, and the master plan really doesn't talk about it. So what you see in front of you is, one, there have been certain typographic formatting changes, because the original plan was written by Mark Bremsa, the planner then, and after that, I have been working with a PDF version, the formatting is all messed up, I couldn't take it anymore, so I decided to just format it and then present it to you. But the real meat of it is on page twenty-one, New Recommendations, and these recommendations actually pertain to some of the redevelopment projects that are in our pipeline. We have two existing landfill sites within the community, and the planning board had already authorized me to undertake the area investigation study for the global landfill site. In fact, I will be in front of you next month with the area investigation study. So the recommendation is to evaluate existing and former landfill sites within the area. The next recommendation was the transit village designation for the Coles property in that area, there are almost forty-two properties, and I think I had made a presentation almost two years back when I, when this process started. We were able to work with NJ DOT and NJ Transit, they were very excited when I reached out to them to see if we could proceed and work on an area designation, because I truly believe that with the Olbridge commuter parking lot, the NJ Transit parking lots being in place, it's an ideal location. And once we have that designation, it will really revitalize, revamp that area. You all are aware, there are many stores that are currently vacant, there is an expansive parking lot which is mostly empty, not the commuter parking lot, but the shopping center parking lot. So that is one project, Route Thirty-five corridor, we have a waterfront, it has been neglected for so many years, and the board has already authorized me to conduct the study for that area. I will be coming, beginning of summer, with the area investigation study for that area. So it's going to be pretty busy in terms of redevelopment planning. And then there are other large underutilized parcels within the township, and we do want to take a look at it, if, to see if they could be rezoned, or they qualify for an area investigation study, and then go the redevelopment route. So there is language in there that enables me to go ahead, meet with the agency, the redevelopment agency, and start working on area investigation studies. The other most important thing which I have noticed is our GDPs. Woodhaven and Oaks, which was developed, which was approved almost twenty years back. What I notice is, these developments, when they came in front of the planning board, they were granted a building coverage variance. The building coverage variance was granted for thirty percent, but at that time, it was an oversight, nobody took the efforts to go and read the definition, but the building coverage really was the impervious coverage. So now what has happened is, the board allowed thirty percent, the builder goes and builds a huge house at thirty percent, but when these homeowners come back to us to put a swimming pool or a deck, they don't have impervious coverage, because the impervious coverage, by the ordinance, is only twenty percent, you granted them a variance for thirty percent, the building is built at thirty percent, there's no room for a pool, and these are million-dollar homes. So the homeowners are getting upset with the zoning officer, getting upset with me, but we have to go by the ordinance, or we have to go by what was approved. So now, we really want to take a step back. Woodhaven has different phases, different zones, we are looking at rezoning these separate sections, and writing bulk standards based on what was approved. Because when we go back, there's nothing to, you know, look back or review it against. Same thing with cluster development or planned developments that were approved by the planning board twenty years back. There are many such developments which were approved with a smaller lot size, because they gave the incentive of having open space. But then what happens is, nobody considered decks, nobody considered any pools, and we don't even have standards to back onto. So most of the times, Damian and I have been digging out files, and we have a guessing game, like, I think this is our seven standards, I think this is our six, the resolution doesn't say anything, and the homeowners are upset because we deny the permit. So I want to go back again, we have twenty-one such clustered zones. So it's a Herculean task, but I think somebody needs to fix it, and we really need to fix it and help the residents. So what you see in the Master Plan Amendment is all these ordinance changes. When I come back with the ordinance, when I go in front of the council with this ordinance, I will need to back it up with the Master Plan Amendment, and that's what I am presenting tonight. So today, tonight is not the hearing, I will be present in front of you next month again for, to take a vote on this, but I know next month is a very busy night, and I wanted to just save some time and present it this, today, because we have a lighter agenda. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
We have any questions from the board members? No questions.
Board members, I just think how important this is. The master plan needs to be consistent with our zoning, and everything needs to match up, and correct some, and I'm not going to call them mistakes, but some mishaps that were made in the past, and the master plan is a living document, and it should be, and it must be looked at continuously, as the needs of the town, and things change in our society, and our master plan has to accurately reflect what's going on today, but also looking towards the future. And if changes need to be made down the road, they will be made. So it's important that we go through this, it might sound boring or, but it's so important that these, and we're lucky to have Vina that's willing to take on this monumental task of going through the Township of Olbridge's master plan, because it's so different from one end of the town to the other. The needs of our community change acre by acre. So, thank you, board, for, you know, accepting this and get involved in it, look at it, read the master plan. I think you'll get a lot of insight, a lot of information, what people were thinking about in the past, what we're thinking about now, and how we should be thinking about the next fifteen, twenty years. Because now we're living with the decisions that were made twenty, twenty-five years ago, we're living with them today, and we see the mistakes. If you go back to see, as Vina said, what's being built today, that was talked about many years ago, with these million-dollar homes with no backyards, and when they come for a pool, they're going to be in trouble. So, something we need to do, and we need to talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cannon? Microphone.
Twenty-five years ago, I just, because I had talked to Vina about it, and I, you know, I understand why you need to make these amendments, but as far as the cluster zoning, you know, the priority at that time, which I think it still is, to maintain open space and make sure that, you know, you just didn't have row after row after row of house, but that you did have recreation areas and open space. So the thought was good, it was just, it did get quite translated back into the ordinance so that it would guide people in the future, and so I, you know, certainly support the need to get that clarified.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cannon. Anyone else?
Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to thank Vina. I know this is a lot of work, you know, Vina's always going above and beyond to do the best she can, and I think this is going to benefit the residents of Olbridge in the long run, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Same as well, from the economic development standpoint, there's a lot going on, and it's Herculean, so I do see it and understand it.
Yeah, thank you for your efforts and your dedication.
Thank you.
Yeah, mine works. Okay, we're going to move on now to our next discussion, which is a presentation for the Rose Lambertson Golf Course, and I just want to let it be known to anybody in the audience, from the public, this is not an application, this is just simply a presence, presentation, so there will, there will be no expert witnesses, nobody sworn in, no questions. If you have comments, you're more than welcome to make the comments at the end of tonight's meeting, but during the discussion, there are no comments or questions.
Chairman, just so that everybody clear, this is a township project, this is our project, so that's the reason that it's a required presentation that we are here in front of the board. So thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Vina?
Is he here? Do you want to sit?
Want me to open it up?
Yep.
Mayor?
Thank you, Planning Board members, again, here we are. We're here to talk about, we're here to make a presentation about a project, as we had said, been talked about for decades. Land was acquired.
Thirty years.
At thirty years, to have a golf course in town. And we got close a few times, certainly previous administrations did everything they could in their power to get this golf course constructed. It was advertised. It was advertised, it was posted, it was signed, but it just never came, never came fruition because of, I guess, circumstances beyond our, our control outside.
Financial meltdown.
Financial, there's a lot of problems. But here we are in March of 2022, and it's coming to fruition at no cost to the taxpayers of Old Bridge because of a redevelopment plan that's happening on other parts of the town. So I'm certainly excited to have a golf course in town. What it means to the entire town, the entire, this impacts the entire town. An increased quality of life for people who golf. An attraction to bring people to Old Bridge that would then golf and then go visit our stores by lunch, by goods, by whatever, to come to Old Bridge. And it's, it's, it's unique because there's not a lot of golf courses being built these days. We read in the papers, a golf course is being closed. So we're so fortunate to have a golf course. And I think it's going to be utilized. We were adamant about that it be open to the public, that it include activities for every age group with the miniature golf. It gives introduction to golfing at a young age, but also to our special needs population here in Old Bridge. We're Camp Robin, where we know activities like this with miniature golf have that hand-eye coordination and activity is something to do. We offer sports, we offer speed skating, we offer basketball. Now we have the opportunity to offer golfing to our special needs community. So I'm very excited about this project. I know it's, it's, it's a vision of many people before me. And we all stand on the shoulders of the people that came before us. And I'm sure they're all, you know, very proud of what's going, what's happening finally. It's going to have a positive impact on our community and a positive impact on the, on the local area there. Facts show that housing prices go up surrounding a golf course. Facts show that traffic is calmed by a golf course. And that's what's going to happen on Lambertson Road. So a lot of people, not a lot of people, a handful of people are speaking negative about a golf course. So we can't make everyone happy, and that's, that's a fact. But we can certainly make a lot of people happy, the entire town. And I think it's a, it's a feather in everyone's cap here on the planning board to be part of this process and see this really happening. So Vina, take it away. Thank you.
I just want a couple of clarifications so that everybody knows. Because I have heard this question came up. This is a Green Acres property, Rose, Rose Track and Lambertson Track. Both were purchased using Green Acres fund. So there are restrictions from Green Acres. The rates that will be charged for the, it will be a three-tier rate, residence statewide and then out-of-state rate. So yes, there will be a lower rate for the township residents. It's going to be required under the Green Acres rules, as far as I know. So I just want to make sure, because I know I have heard those, those questions came up saying, you know, how the rate structure is going to be, so.
Thank you, Hama. Vina? Thank you, Mayor.
So board members, you may recall, I was in front of you in November last year when this was at an infancy stage, a preliminary concept. And we came and presented and I explained to you the project. And then I had promised that once we work closely on the plans and once it's in the final stage, then we will be back in front of you and we will, we will give you an update. So what you see on the screen is the final plan for the golf course. And if you can see, it's the, the roadway that runs horizontal to this slide or parallel to the slide is Lambertson Road. And then the one that runs vertically is Amboy Road. And as you enter on Lambertson Road to the north side, where you see the red tiny building, that is the clubhouse for the golf course. It's a six thousand square feet clubhouse building. To the northwest, the tiny area which is marked with PG is the putting green. To the north of the clubhouse building is the miniature golf. To, again, the larger green area to the nor, northwest, within the northwest quadrant is actually the practice range. And then majority of the golf course is to the south of Lambertson Road. The tiny red building, which you see within the southwest quadrant, which is on Lambertson closer, is the maintenance building. That building is five thousand square feet and has roughly ten parking spaces. Now going back to the clubhouse, the clubhouse is a six thousand square feet building with roughly hundred and ten parking spaces located to the east side of the clubhouse. And the parking area is closer to a vacant residential property. So the applicant has, again, has agreed to maintain a fifty-foot buffer from that property line. And that will be beefed up with heavy landscaping to provide screening from the cars that are being parked. The design.
Did you say that was vacant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There are overall eleven bio retention basins within the golf course and three lakes for stormwater management. The design of the golf course was largely driven by the existing, or existence of wetlands and environmental constraints on the property. And there are, like I said, there are numerous ponds to help irrigation and water conservation. The maintenance building was intentionally tucked in on the side so that it does not interfere with the golf course activities. So you all are in receipt of engineering and, engineering and planning review memo that was issued on March second. You must have noticed there were some comments made by Nicole's office and my office. And after that, on March fourth, I believe, there was a meeting with the developers team. And we went over each of those comments. Some of the things that were agreed upon was that there will be a fence, a five-foot-high aluminum ornamental fence that goes around the golf course, except for the areas where the fence is not seen, where it will be a galvanized chain link fence. And the, there were some concerns about landscaping around the ponds for safety measures, of course. The developer has agreed to put landscaping around the ponds, except they will not be providing vegetation when it's in the line of play, right? And then, and you know what? I don't play golf. I am trying my best to present. I have called Mr. Gersberg like at least five times to check what I'm talking about. So that's why we're giggling. But so, and also the, I want to share the architecturals of the clubhouse building. This is almost the fourth iteration. I know Mr. Gersberg, architect, is pretty frustrated with me because I've been nitpicking on stuff. This is not the final version because the last comment I had was that the canopy has too many posts and they, they don't look attractive to me. I just received an email from the firm saying that they are working and they will be reducing those posts and making them more attractive with some sort of cladding. So this is not the final version. However, I just wanted to give the board a glimpse of how it will look. You must have seen some activity going on on the golf course site. So the developers, professionals have been working with the township professionals to just map the area of disturbance. And next week onwards, their construction will commence on the site. Minor site construction will commence. And I received a lot of phone calls from residents asking if this is real and if it's happening. And if it's happening, when is it happening? So I just wanted to make an official announcement. The plan is that the miniature golf and the driving range will open up in the spring of 2023. The entire golf course will be open between Memorial Day and July fourth of next year. So it's happening and it's happening soon.
Yeah, we appreciate that. That's an aggressive plan and that's, we appreciate that.
So that's all on my end.
Okay, I have a question regarding the clubhouse. What amenities will be in other than a pro shop? What's going into the clubhouse? Do we know?
Any kind of cafeteria or something?
So, so, so the area that you see, if you look at the bottom left, where, the bottom left here. So you see the canopy, you see two doors, those are restrooms. And then you'll see, if you look through it, you see how there's almost like a.
Service window?
A service window, thank you. That's the proper, yeah, perfect. A service window. So essentially you can get food, but it's going to be, it's not going to be a restaurant. It's going to be easy pick food. You know, hopefully we'll work on liquor license or however we do that. You get beer and relax. There'll be tables, you don't see that here, but there'll be tables for you to relax afterwards. We assume that there'll probably be ice cream and things because the kids coming from the miniature golf. This miniature golf, by the way, is not like a, it's one of those fancy ones with water and, and real features.
With mills and.
And hills and, you know, I'm sure we'll all score, our kids will beat us in, in the miniature golf. But, but in here you have a pro shop, you'll have food, you'll have restrooms. The reason it's so big is the cart, it's also a cart barn. So that'll be where the seventy-two golf carts sit as well.
That's what the large doors are for?
Yeah, the large doors when you're looking. So you see the one on the bottom left that coming out. And then the two doors on the, on the upper right is really indicative. That's where the carts go in. There'll be, there'll be a little fence around it so you don't see them cleaning them off and things like that.
So there's maintenance that will go on in there?
There's no maintenance. They, they just, they just are plugged in there and they're washed down before they go in.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else on the, on the board have any questions?
Yeah, just a quick one about as they come down Lambertson Road and there's a cart crossing over there, so they're going to come across from whatever, three to four. Is there going to be a stopping mechanism there to slow people down? Just so we all understand.
That was a big issue. So Nicole has been on this.
There's, there's actually Mr. Mimakis rumble strips as you advance towards that crossing. And then there's going to be a signage, a static signage with flashing beacons on either side of the roadway just to make people aware that there is a car crossing there. And hopefully the rumble strips in advance of that would alert then drivers that something's going on. But there will also be signage along with those beacons.
Can I just mention, I don't know if anybody's been to Rutgers. I live near Rutgers University. Rutgers University, the driving range, the practice area, the, the parking is all on the other side of a road, significantly busier than this, that that's where the kids go to school. And they have a very similar, that's one of the pictures I sent was they have, they have the flashing stop signs and things like that. And it's been very successful there as well.
Almost like a railroad crossing.
No, that's great. That's my way to work every day. So it's a good thing. I get rumbled in the morning, wake me up on the way in. Excellent. So why don't we get to that for the record, that there's going to be a stop sign there, slow traffic down. So safety for the golfers going across. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Le.
I like the idea that you're going to slow the traffic down on that road because I travel that road a couple of times a week. And you cannot do twenty-five miles an hour without being pushed. So that's, that's a good point. Has the Tangip established a name for the, the golf course?
Yes, Mr. Le, yes, and I was going to announce it. The official name is going to be the Old Bridge Golf Club at Rose and Lambertson. That'll be the official name.
I'm happy that Lambertson and Rose names are in. Another question I have, utilities, what, what kind of utilities are you going to have?
So the, the water line will come from OB MUA. But actually, what, what's really nice is the developer has the ponds, the wet ponds on the property that are going to act as irrigation for the site. So it's almost like self-contained with the water. So their water usage won't be so much on the site. It's really only the water that's going to house for the clubhouse and then also for washing down the, the golf cart, you know.
What about sewer?
Sewer, sewer enough for the clubhouse, but that's it.
You're going to be able to tap, tap into sewer for the clubhouse?
Oh, yes, yes. They have an application into the Old Bridge Municipal Utilities Authority. And even though this is an Old Bridge Township project, the developer still goes through the same iteration as if it was a full-blown application in front of our planning board. And so the, the same type of memo that you got from the engineering department is the same type of memo that we would distribute whether it was a township project or, or an outside, an outside firm coming in and doing a private development. We, we look at everything and we also have experts such as our traffic consultant on board too to make sure that the signage is appropriate on Lambertson and, and everything is pretty kosher.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, if I may, I want to add one more thing that I should have done earlier is that the ma, the management of the golf course is going to be outsourced. It's not going to be in-house municipal management. I don't want to see, even the last time when we were trying, it was very clear that we don't want to be seeing like what is going, what happened at the Middlesex County golf courses. They pretty much run down and now they have a outside management company. And so first five years, the developer is going to manage. And this is going to be part of our redevelopment agreement. And, and he's going to guarantee township revenue from the golf cor, the operation, regardless of whether he has a, you know, he makes profit or not. We'll guarantee our revenue and we're, we're working on that final number. So I think it's kind of a win-win for the town.
Sure, sure. Okay, Eric, Mr. De Palma?
So I know one of the things, and I see Rich here from our historical society, the farmhouse that's on there today. From my understanding, it's one of the older buildings in our township. But we're, I know the initial plan was to try to reutilize that for it. But it's, it's the fact that we're not utilizing that is because that it's, at least in talking with some of the folks in fire, firemen aren't even allowed to go in there because of the dilapidation that has happened. So I just want to make sure that, that we talk about this because it is, it is something that, you know, is part of the history of the town. We would love to save it. I, I would love to have that as the clubhouse, but it's just, it, it's not feasible, is correct?
Councilman, unfortunately, the house has deteriorated to a point of no return. Whereas even you said the firemen are not permitted to go in. I believe the last time I entered the house was probably about ten years ago and it was dangerous. The basement has been full of water for decades. Mold has run rampant through the house. But it still doesn't make it any less important. It is an older structure and we'll do everything that we can to let people know what, what was there. I'm commissioning a painter, a landscape painter to, to do a rendition of the house in its glory. And that painting will be posted somewhere in the clubhouse where people will see what stood on that site. And then, and then the historical society can come up with all factual years that it was built and, you know, what went, went on in the house and the farming and give a complete history of that property, which that property deserves. It's been here in Old Bridge a lot longer than any of us may be put together, but it's been here a long time. So it's very important that we do recognize that house and what went on on that property in, in the past.
So we could set off like a little corner of the clubhouse or wherever it might be to have it specifically for this would be, what I think would be.
Informational, anyone coming to the site will be met well aware of what, what was there.
Excellent.
He plans of a monument on the exact site, like a concrete monument or something on the site itself?
We're probably going to have some kind of plaque, Dean. I don't know the exact site, if that interferes with the new layout. But onsite will be a plaque and I said like a picture of the, a painting of the house that will go on for years.
With the clubhouse, so it's all going to be access from the outdoors in terms of the food. And I mean, can people go in to the clubhouse?
No, of course, the, you walk in, there'll be a place to obviously pay for miniature golf or the driving range and everything. There'll be a club shop, a club.
Pro shop?
Club pro shop, thank you. It was like, everything is permanent too. I'm not trying to give you the third. And then there's going to be access to the same, to the same restaurant with a low bar. Because for instance, when it is, there's a rain delay or, or there's. Because for instance, when it is, there's a rain delay or, or there's, a lot of times there's, there's fog delay because if, if it's moist, you usually try to delay the starts. There'll be places probably, some lounge areas to sit and wait, get a coffee in the morning or in the middle of a round and, and do something inside as well. So there's both. There's just not gonna be activities in there.
Will you be able to access the concession from what you're saying, from the inside?
From inside and outside, yes, I should've mentioned that. Thank you.
So just to clarify, both the, um, the, the mini golf course, I mean, whatever it's called. And, uh, the driving range are going to be on the opposite side of the golf course?
On the northerly side of Lamberton where the clubhouse is. So right behind the clubhouse is the miniature golf course. So on the screen, you see the little, uh, the small red building on the, towards the top of the page. Above that, so to the north is mini golf and then to the right, uh, left side is the practice range.
Okay, and there's separate parking for those?
So close to the clubhouse is the parking area, so for the whole, uh, for the entire golf course. Including the miniature golf and the practice range.
And the parking is within walking distance to the miniature golf and the, and the driving range?
That is correct.
Oh, but it's all, there's not separate parking for those two facilities? It's all? And I assume that's all been calculated out to accommodate all of the.
That is correct. There are, there are a hundred and ten parking spaces within that parking area.
Is there any overflow? Any overflow parking in case it gets overly busy?
I don't believe so. I know there is roughly ten spaces near the maintenance building, but I don't believe there, there is overflow parking.
I mean, I, I don't see a need for that for the, the normal operation of the golf course, but maybe the mini golf and the driving range may, you know, bring in, um, some cars, but I, I don't know the statistics of that.
I actually was looking at that just now, um, while we were talking. Typically, that would be significantly over what you need for a golf course, just because if you do the math, you have at most twenty, you know, twenty, twenty foursomes on a, on the golf course, twenty-two, twenty-four, you're talking about, you know, eighty, ninety. So, um, and our employees will not park there. So, um, typically it, it's enough. And the driving range is, is, um, during the day, it's typically used for the warming up and afterwards. And then other, later, later in the day at four or five o'clock when the course is really kind of ending down, people come after work and hit balls. That's typically the busiest time, um, of a, of a golf course. And then, and then no one's playing obviously on the course, that's good. What I am not concerned is a, is a har- is a harsh word is, is that maybe there should be five or ten overflow spots. I was thinking about shifting certain things, um, to just allow overflow. And the only time I could see it ever being used would be a Saturday and Sunday where parents are taking their mini, their kids to miniature golf and maybe there's an overlap there. But, but again, I also assumed in that math that every single person was coming on their own. I golf with my boys, so we're going in one car usually. So, you know, that's a foursome, so. So I don't think it's, it's indicative necessarily. I think a hundred is more than enough, but I'm just concerned, I was also thinking of the same thing.
Okay, excellent.
Mr. Gerst, so real quick, just the, um, clarification on the, the driving range. It's more like a, a practice range more than a full-scale driving range. It's for, really, it's really for the golfers to warm up and stuff like that. We're not talking about a fifty, fifty-day driving, driving range.
It's not a top golf.
No, this is not a, this is not a top golf. This is not where, I do not envision this being a place where you come and in the middle of the day, you know, you're just hanging out and doing stuff. It's typically not.
You may get a couple of people here or there that'll go hit golf balls, but besides that, it's not going to be the main driver of folks going there. It's gonna be, um, a half hour early for my tee time, let me grab a bucket of golf balls and let me warm up.
Also, Councilman, that would be probably a, um, training where the pro can come out and train him to hit balls there, which is normally on a, on a driving.
We'd like to get involved with high school, the first tee. I mean, this is, this is a, first and foremost, it's a community asset. Like, that's the reason there's a miniature golf, because it's not just for golfers to come. It's ideas to, you know, go from, you know, two-years-old or one-year-old all the way up, you know, uh, up the ladder. And the only thing I'll just say is that, um, there's not gonna be, it's not a forty-person, I think there's like twenty-five bays. If you think about how many people are coming, it's not gonna be like, there's so many bays that the golfers aren't using that, that people are gonna come to just use it. The only time that I could see that is, is more like, you know, five, six, seven o'clock at night when, when people are finishing up their round. Maybe that's when it would be. But again, I don't foresee it. It's just not set up like that.
How many yards is the driving range?
You could hit a driver.
Okay.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of room, so, um, and the way it's set up, um, you could take a driver out. It, it won't be limited.
Do you know the hours of operation for the driving range?
Uh, we haven't decided. It would be with, with.
Within the township's?
With the township's approval.
Okay.
There's no lights, the driving range? No lights?
There are some, there are some lights. Um, also because, because the mini, no, because the miniature golf, I mean, you wanna be able to take your kids out if it, if it's dark at six-thirty in, in November, you, it's a, it's a, it's supposed to be an activity to do on a Sunday, you know, on a Saturday and a, on a Thursday, you know? So, um, there are gonna be some lights. The course is not lit, but that one area up in the upper corner and, um, it's kinda, if you're looking all the way up, the reason we set it up like this was it's very efficient. Unfortunately, I own golf courses in Long Island. It's not a business you'd normally wanna be in. But, um, but, so I'm very familiar with, with, with the labor and the, and the way it works. And the way we did it here was very efficient, so you could park, grab your token, grab, grab, and if you're miniature golf, grab your golf ball, right? Get a scorecard and walk over to the miniature golf and kids are, it's, it's very kid-friendly. It's, it's, you come out of your car and you, you're now walking in, in an area where no more cars are. So that was the plan, was to keep all the non-course-related stuff all very, very tight and centralized.
Yeah, can I just, I'm not a golfer at all and I know nothing about it, but, um, I know when we first considered this many, many years ago that there was talk about, I think, miniature golf and some other, and there was concern that some of the, those types of activities would detract from the authenticity and the character of the actual golf course. So, since you seem to have a lot of experience with that, do you find that to be?
I think that if, I think that if it was at a, actually nowadays, even if it was at a private club, um, they're gearing so much to families that it would be an amenity. So I would say at a, at a public course, I don't see that at all. I would never, I, I'm a member of a private club and I would not take that as, yes, I am, uh, besides my own. And, and, and I play public clubs, courses all over the country. And this is, this is not, not something that would ruffle my feathers at all. It's, to me, it's an amenity. And I like, I mean, personally, you know, if you're into golf, you're into the health of golf, right? That's just the way it is. You're worried about the next generation. You hear all those things. And, uh, you know, the pandemic has been good for golf in terms of getting people out and younger people out, so hopefully it's healthier. But we all, if you're into golf, are worried about the next generation. And so you want to see them doing miniature golf to the driving range, to the putting green and, and, and seeing that. That's like an important aspect of giving back, if you will.
You start them early.
Yeah.
Can I comment on that?
I don't golf. I mini golf, so, uh, I, I have three little ones.
You don't, you don't have a, you don't have a membership in a private?
No, I.
Professional mini golf.
I was thinking about it for next year. But, um, I, so I appreciate the mini golf because I could bring my little girls there and it's a fun family activity in Obridge, you know, so that's really nice and I shouldn't say this, but I actually used to work at a driving range. Many, many years ago, I used to drive the cart where people hit.
I was gonna say, there's a job available.
Yeah, but, uh, weekends, right? But I appreciate this in Obridge. I, I think this is great. This sparks an interest that I might golf. So to have it in town, family activity, right around the corner. You don't have to go five towns over to try to find a mini golf range that hasn't been maintained in fifty years. Yeah, I, I think this is nice.
One thing that I do see as a golfer and from comments that I receive, the miniature golf course and if, I don't have my glasses, but it's in the back, so you won't really see it if you're driving or coming into the golf course. The miniature golf is in the back. Not like it's gonna be out in the front, where you're gonna drive up to a golf course to go play golf and see. Which is gonna be a beautiful mini golf course. It's in the back, which is a good thing, so.
Thanks, everybody. Any other final comments from anyone? Mayor? Any final comments? We're all good? Okay, if I'm good, you're good. Again, send yours, I am. Okay, so, uh, that brings that to a conclusion and I appreciate everybody's effort and time and thoughtful comments. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution. And that resolution is forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one P and it's Twenty Twenty Real Estate LLC. So I need a motion on that.
I'll move it.
Moved by? By Mr. Lanning.
And second?
By Mr. Pink. I should've let Vina get settled first.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
I did not attend that meeting. I'll have to abstain, please.
Mr. Rena?
No.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Okay, I just had a question related. Is the development agreement, is that still being worked on or has that been signed yet or okay by council or?
It's still being worked on.
It's being worked on?
Yes.
Okay, is there any, um, projected date as to when that's going to be?
We're, we're pretty close. I mean, we're, we're close, we're, we're working with the internal professionals to, um, sort of make sure everything is included in that developer's agreement. Um, we had an initial draft by the developer provided to our office and, uh, we have, um, our consulting engineers, our attorneys, um, the BA and the mayor that are, are closely involved.
Okay, moving on, we have a completeness waiver. Which is twelve dash twenty-twenty-two P Alfieri Obridge Associates LLC, major preliminary subdivision and minor preliminary site plan with C variances. Okay, do we open it up for discussion or we just vote on it?
This is the waiver, right? So I did speak, um, I did speak to the attorney and he has agreed to, uh, providing us with the details before he comes in front of the planning board. So that is why he's not present tonight, but he agrees with the recommendations of, uh, this letter.
Okay, and you're comfortable everybody's?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. With that, does anybody have any questions or comments? And if not, I'll put it to vote. We'll have a motion. I'll move it. By Mr. Rena and a second.
I'll second it.
By Mr. Pink? Oh, Mr. De Palma.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Okay, and the last items on the agenda for this evening are three applications, all of which have been adjourned.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can, just on the RD management, just to make one, uh, note that, um, we didn't get an official written request for an adjournment. Uh, for this one, I had reached out to the attorney a number of times, hadn't heard back. But this is the one where we were under litigation, uh, for a prior denial. This was the subsequent, but then as I reported previously, they have, uh, working on filing an application with the zoning board as an alternative. And asked for this to be held in abeyance pending that. Since that, uh, application's still pending, um, uh, before the zoning board, uh, it would be my recommendation that we adjourn this as well, uh, even though we haven't gotten official requests because that has been the intention of the applicant at this time.
Okay, so we'll treat it like a typical?
Yes, please.
Very good.
I have a question, Mr. Sardillo, if we can ask that. Um, I know we're in litigation, but has anything changed in that litigation? Where, where we've, what we wanted as opposed to what they wanna give us?
They're, uh, making an application with the zoning board on an absolute, uh, different concept altogether, being residential. And that's what they're pursuing with the, um, residential development with the zoning board, because that requires, uh, D variance approval. Uh, that's why it's not before this board. Pending the outcome of that application is whether or not we move forward with the litigation, whether they move forward with this application. Uh, everything's currently being held in abeyance pending that, because if they get their approvals, then they're going to withdraw their, uh, their complaint, dismiss their complaint and withdraw that application. So it will become a moot issue with these applications and that prior development proposal.
Okay, that's, that's good for us to know with the board, because that was a, it's being a tough one, so. All right, thank you.
Okay, so again, the first application that had been adjourned is ten dash twenty-twenty-P RD Management. And, uh, as Mr. Sardillo just described, I don't need to go into any more detail. So I would like to ask for a motion.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lauer. And second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Petty.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Okay, the second one, uh, second application here for adjournment is eighty-eight dash twenty-twenty-P Richard DeVivo. And this is a minor subdivision, uh, for a two-lot minor. And this applicant has made an official request for the adjournment. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
By Ms. Cannon and a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. De Palma.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Okay, and the third and final adjournment request is forty-three dash twenty-twenty-one-P and it's Woodhaven Village Parcel OC dash two, which is a major site plan preliminary. And again, this applicant has made the official request for adjournment. So with that, if I can get a motion?
I'll move it.
By Mr. De Palma and a second. By Mr. Pink.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings the agenda to a close and prior to our adjournment, I would like to open it up to any general public comments for anything you've heard this evening. Good evening.
Please just identify your name and address for the record.
There it goes. Okay. Uh, my name is, uh, Richard Pucciarelli, P-U-C-C-I-A-R-E-L-L-I. My address is twenty Noel Court. I am president of the Madison Township Historical Society. A couple of you people up in the dais know me already, know who I am. I lived in the town, I moved into this town in nineteen ninety-two. And I, so it'll be thirty years I'll be in this town in August. And when I first moved here, um, the golf course was a new pie in the sky idea. And, uh, I live right outside that road or for Lam- around from Lamberton, so I know the property very well. My involvement, my involvement with the historical society started about maybe five years ago. And I've been president ever since. I wanted to bring to the attention of the planning board certain issues. I'm gonna combine my remarks actually to the house, the Lamberton house and a little history in the synopsis. Uh, I have to point out to the board that the historical society has heard from residents who are distressed about what has happened to that house. who are distressed about what has happened to that house. And I can, believe me, I understand. I understand what has happened to the house, and it is a shame. But I wanted the residents of the town to know that we are aware. The historical society in the past has tried many different ways to preserve that house. In the past, has done Herculean tasks to try to even acquire the property, the house in question, to stop it from deteriorating. Due to what Mayor Owen said, missteps, I like that word, missteps, in the past, has allowed that property to deteriorate to the condition that it has today. I just wanted to talk about a little bit time, just a little bit before you, about Marion Lambertson, because I don't think a lot of people in the town know who Marion Lambertson was. And I think, as a sidebar, everyone should know. Marion Lambertson established, was one of the founding women in the town that founded the historical society in 1964. She was involved in the township from, the historical society from the very beginning. Also, Marion Lambertson served on the committee that designed the seal that's behind you. Those aspects on that seal is her, her committee and her design. When the seal was redesigned for then Madison Township. So she had her hand in the history of this town. And her family has had a hand in the history of the township for going back many, many years. Now, I just wanted to point out, from a historical point of view, that that house was placed on the historical list in 1981. 1981 was added to the historical site inventory. And actually, it is one of the oldest surviving homes in Old Bridge Township. The building dated back prior to 1820s. So that building survived, is the oldest in the town. All right. And I just, I just wanted to mention about Lambertson, because Lambert, Jonathan Lambertson, I'm going to read a little bit, just a little bit here, from, was a private in the Middlesex militia during the Revolutionary War. He was one of the Lambertson family who were pioneers in the Old Bridge Township area. And of course, it was called South Amboy Township during the Revolutionary War. And they intermarried many other pioneer families in the area. Jonathan Lambertson's son Joshua and many other family members are buried in the Methodist Church Cemetery. Now, you know where that is, I think, on Route 34. House has been in the present owner's family since purchased by a great-grandfather in 1827. Okay, the Lambertson family was later changed, the Lambertson, the spelling was changed. When the inventory was redone in 2006, the house again appears on the inventory. And in a funny sidebar, it says, under additional descriptions, the property is currently under restricted access, identified as the future site of the Old Bridge Municipal Golf Course. This is on the inventory sheet in 2000, October 2006. Now, since the town acquired that property and missteps were made during the intervening years, I'm not going to say who and what, but the significance of the property cannot be escaped from anybody in this town. That property is significant, very significant. And the historical society would like to see it properly memorialized. And I know the mayor made a suggestion, the historical society has its own suggestion, that a marker be placed there. And the verbiage would be, what we would describe, be placed on that marker, and a significant marker be placed there, not a plaque on a building that could be ignored, but an Old Bridge Historical Commission marker. Now, you might have seen them on 34, they line out on, there's two cemeteries there, and you can see them plainly from 34. And there's one also at Lake Ridge on 516 down there. I'm talking about those markers. And I think the planning board should give serious consideration to the historical society's request, because the property needs something to memorialize, and not a little plaque on a building. I don't think that that would do justice to Marion Lambertson, who her family gave a role to this town over the years. Now, granted, I didn't live here, but I learned this. Okay, so I'm just passing this along. And I want to know the residents of the town understand that we have not been idle over the past 30 years about that property. We've been here. So it's unfortunate, like I said, the missteps that happened. And I hope the planning board would take my suggestion under consideration and incorporate that into the developer's plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. And it doesn't go unheard. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I just address, because with regard to your request at the end, I just wanted to let you know that this board doesn't have jurisdiction over this project. It is a township project. This was just a presentation, kind of informative. So your suggestion, while well-taken here, the board doesn't have any power to enforce it. It would be better braised at the committee, at the council level, because they're the ones that would have control over whether or not that would happen. Just wanted to let you know.
Joe, just real quick, Mr. Puccirelli is, as the council person on this board, and you and I have had this discussion, we will, we will make sure that we properly do what the historical society is looking to have done, hopefully in addition to what Mayor Henry had mentioned as well.
Yeah, I would also like to add that when we acquired the property back when, the intention was to restore that building so that it was to be used, even just, you know, as storage or extra space. And that was always the intention. And unfortunately, over the years, it, you know. But anyway, I would certainly support what you're advocating.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, anyone else from the public have any general comments regarding anything that, at this meeting this evening? Sure, yes.
Absolutely, you can bring it up. It's just, it's not going to be, it's not an application before this board as a normal application would be. So it's not that we would have jurisdiction to say yes or no, it's approved, and yes or no, these are conditions. It's better, that would, if you're looking to have something changed or altered to the plans, it would be better brought to the governing body. However, this body, you know, welcomes any comments.
We'd like your input.
And just please, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ron Varial, Old Bridge Residence 37 Briarwood Drive, on the Matteawan side. More than anything, I wanted to just express tonight my thanks to the developers who were putting together this golf project. I spoke at one of the earlier meetings when we were on Zoom. Glenwood was a special place to me. I spent a lot of time there as a kid, even growing up, working there as a member. Last few years I haven't, but I wanted to thank you for including in one of the plans I saw, when one of the follow-ups that, that access to the walking paths and some of the wetlands was going to be included. So hopefully in the final, in the final construction, that will be possible. So that was the first thing. Mainly, and I see we have a developer here tonight, so I thought I would just at least get it on the record. I volunteered, I've sent, you know, my contact information to your company that I was able to find. Maybe you could give me a better email address. But if there's going to be any kind of, you know, committee or commission or through the rec department to just have some, some representation from the golfing public, some things, you know, just hearing, besides being a golfer, I was a golf writer, sports writer for many years, involved in the, in the industry. So I want to make sure that this doesn't become, you know, sitting in front of all of you, say, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. And three years down the road, we've got a giant mess over there that's been run into the ground because it was poorly managed. The management company is, the range of management companies across New Jersey and across the United States ranges dramatically. I hope that Old Bridge will have some say and at least some voice in that process, because if you, if you don't use the right management company, they will, they will, they'll bleed it dry. And we've seen it over and over again. So the difference between like, without naming names, there have been some really bad ones. And hopefully, that's, that's something considered. And lastly, just with the, with the Old Bridge rates, the only, the only course I could think of that's really a good correlation here is up in West Orange, where a township bought a public course. They run Rock Spring. For the first year or two, they were, they would offer reduced rates to West Orange Township residents. I think the last time I looked, they're down to like Tuesday afternoons. If you're, if you're a West Orange resident, you get a $10 discount or something. I want that, you know, just to be out there, that when it comes time, you know, and, you know, the management company has to take their cut, Old Bridge wants to take their cut. You know, I don't know what the financials will be if this is, if this is a break-even project and every, every penny goes back into the golf course or into the rates. But that's just something that's happened. And I want everybody here to know that that's, that would not be a hard thing for them to do. If anybody's seen Caddyshack, you know, when they, you know, caddy, the caddies get to swim, they get like, you know, 15 minutes in the middle of the afternoon. We don't want that to be the situation. We have, we have an opportunity here. The Monmouth County golf courses are respected across the state and across the Northeast as some of the best, the best-run county courses. Old Bridge has that opportunity. I hope that that land and those designs are, you know, can make all of us in Old Bridge proud. I would hope that if there's an opportunity to even stretch it out, I see that it's 6,400 yards.
71.
What's that?
471, so.
So that's good. There are a lot of opportunities that even, you know, some of the state counties, the state qualifiers go to different, you know, we don't need to host the PGA Tour, but, but to be able to have people from around the area feel real pride and real, you know, a desire to be here will be important. And the last thing is, another thing that's really dear to me is being really inclusive to the community, young people. The First Tee, I felt very strongly, I felt very good when you mentioned the First Tee. That's an organization that's really aimed to, you know, include communities that have never been part of the golf, you know, world. It's communities of color, it's communities of, you know, from different socioeconomic backgrounds. And those are very hard to, you know, there are different youth organizations that run through private golf courses that are very difficult to get into if you're not at one of the higher-end country clubs. So I hope that that's a, a high school team. I'm also a rec basketball and Little League coach. So those kind of where a lot of my interests intersect. So hopefully, we could use this for the driving range and different ways to, to make this real amenity for the, for the town.
Mr. Chairman, you mind if I make a comment, a comment? So, living by the golf course and having one of the former members of Glenwood living across the street from me, projecting everything that you've said, I can guarantee as much as possible that we'll be accommodated and our, and our developer can probably attest to that. But I hear it all the time from another member of Glenwood.
Who I know.
Who you know. Basically, it's every time I walk out my door, and we're good friends. But, you know, I hear it. So I got it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, we thank you for your input and stay, stay involved.
All right, thank you. Please do. Thank you very much. Okay, before we adjourn, anyone else? Sure, come on.
You gotta come up.
Thank you with the driving range. Don't underestimate it. I'm relatively new to Old Bridge, about six years. The nearest decent driving range is 20, 25 minutes.
Yep.
That's very far for a cop. So, driving range is going to be probably very popular. 25 minutes down the highway is, and then a few periales to cop top an hour.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you for that.
And just to reiterate, only because I don't think it was being picked up on the video and anyone watching, the comment was just thanking the developer for including the driving range. You know, he found it, gentleman found it important to him and appreciates it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we're all done with that. I will ask for a motion for adjournment. By Mrs. Cannon?
Second.
And a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Petty.
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Lauer?
Yes.
Ms. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll see you next month.